Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the September 27, 2018 Business Meeting of the Clackamas County Commissioners. Deputy County Administrator Laurel Butman, would you please call the role?
Yes, I will, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Today, we have Nate Boderman here from County Council and our Clerk of Board, Mary Rathke. And Chair Bernard, I want to denounce him, is out of the office and will not be in attendance today. And Commissioner Humberston is serving as Chair. And Commissioner Savis is at another meeting, and he will be here a little bit late, I believe, because he's coming from Portland. So, for the role, Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Chair Humberston.
Here.
Thank you.
I'd ask that you all arise and follow me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the first item that we have on our agenda today is citizens' communication. And we have one card, and it is Mr. Les Poole.
Good morning, it's me again. I get people that call me and keep saying, "Well, just keep going down there and talking about stuff." So sometimes when I'm on my way here, I really am not sure exactly what I'm going to talk about. The reason I say that is when you're on your way here, you probably have the same thoughts because there's so much to talk about. But I'll hone in on my specialty, of course: land use, transportation, and concerns about how we're spending money. As most folks know, we're not too far away from having a final ballot title for our initiative to require a vote on tolling. I've been speaking with business owners and folks in Clackamas County, as well as elected officials, about another transportation topic, and this is a good one, unlike tolling. This is a good one, and that is putting a focus into getting the Sunrise Corridor Phase Two constructed. The initial phase relieved the mess at I-205 and 212. We were literally backing traffic up onto the freeway at those exits, which is a violation of the federal law, which can actually get funding pulled. And when I say "we," I say "all of us," because we've got cars, we've got trucks, we've got commerce, and we've got overloaded highways. And so I'm so pleased that, over two years ago, they opened the first segment of that highway, and look forward to getting it out to 172nd. Damascus is growing, regardless of whether or not there's a city there. Every other meeting, we have applications and approvals for lighting districts and for annexations into sewer districts. And the significance of that, of course, is that that means population's growing. So with or without Damascus being incorporated, there's one place that's definitely infilling. And I invite everyone to drive out to 172nd and take a good look at what's going on out there. Happy Valley's building a new -- or converting a school. That Fred Meyers -- it's not just Fred Meyers, but Fred Meyers has built a huge shopping center there at 172 and Sunnyside Road. And you get about 100 feet towards Damascus from 172nd on Sunnyside, and you're backing that old unsafe country road that's been there since the days of wagons. So I'm really encouraging citizens, staff, and the commissioners to pursue the issues of our roads. I'd also like to, sometime in the near future, get us an update, some kind of a presentation or whatever it takes, on where we're at with funding for maintenance. That's an issue that has been remedied somewhat by the state gas tax, but I know the county's still considering a vehicle recrea -- recreation -- registration fee, something like that was proposed for the Selwood Bridge years ago. And I think it's just real important that we know where that's at. There are so many tax increases and so many subsidizes -- subsidized issues, and so much pull on the average person's money right now, that what we're seeing, regardless of your party, regardless of your politics or views, we're really feeling the squeeze. So please continue to focus heavily on the roads, and let's send a message to Metro that we're okay with some of what they're doing, and we're certainly not okay with some of what they're doing. It's a real mixed bag. I appreciate, as always, the opportunity to come in, and I would ask one last quick question. Does anyone know when our next evening meeting is? Could we maybe get an announcement about that at some point?
It should be the next fifth Thursday.
It's in November.
So when there's a fifth Thursday, then we have the evening -- okay.
November 29th, 6:00 PM, here.
November 29th, good. Well, thank you very much.
Good, thank you. Just as a point of interest, we are still working on the VRF, and all of us have had meetings with our various and sundry state legislators to talk about our agendas as a county, and it has included discussions about both the Sunrise Corridor and the 205 issue. So we are pursuing it. The next item on our agenda today is a public hearing. It's the First Reading of Ordinance Amending Chapter 7.03 of the Clackamas County Code relating to gates within the public right-of-way. Presenting is Nate Boderman, County Council, Mike Baze, Department of Transportation and Development.
Good morning, thank you. Nate Boderman, Assistant County Counsel here. This morning, I'll be presenting the First Reading of an Ordinance for your consideration, which would amend the process for issuing and renewing gate permits on public roads in the county. And you may recall that we presented this comment to you, both myself and Mike Baze is here from DTD, presented this concept to you in early August. And again, recall, the types of gates we're talking about here are those physical barriers on our public rights-of-way here on county roads, or I suppose could be local access roads for that matter. But the concept is these are public rights-of-way in the county, not private roads. The stated intent of the county code is that these gates are to be allowed in only the most extraordinary of circumstances, and we covered this with you at your policy session. The typical process is that DTD staff will intake these applications. If somebody has a request to gate a county road, we'll evaluate that and then make a recommendation to the board. And so the board is the one that would conduct a public hearing on this and ultimately make the decision. DTD staff is requesting one amendment that will require that 100% of the property owners who -- whose access is affected by a gate to consent to the gate permit application. And so even before the board would hold a public hearing on this, county staff would require that any gate permit application contain the consent of all those affected. DTD staff is also requesting the removal of the existing requirement that the gate permits be reviewed every five years. So this exists in our county code currently, and the idea here is, instead of setting an automatic termination date for these permits, staff would propose that these permits exist in perpetuity and then be reevaluated only when there's a change that might affect or warrant the removal of the previously authorized gate. So that's the other change that's being proposed. These were the two changes that were discussed at the policy session. Language has been incorporated into the ordinance along these lines, has been included in your materials for your review. The changes are actually fairly minimal. We're removing one section, and we're adding a few words to another section to include that 100% consent. So again, the actual changes implementing this are fairly minimal, but do contain those two important proposals that we just talked about. So I know this is a relatively brief summary. We did just recently talk about this, so I think it's probably best just to cede the rest of the time if you have any specific questions about what's being proposed here. And again, Mike Baze is here to answer any questions specifically that you might have about this.
Thank you. Do the commissioners have any clarifying questions of the presenter?
No.
Seeing none, I will open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak. Seeing no one wishes to speak today, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion to read the ordinance by title only.
I move we read the ordinance by title only. Second.
It has been moved and seconded to move -- to read the ordinance by title only. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Please read the ordinance by title only.
Okay, I'm going to assign a number also. It's going to be 08-2018, an ordinance amending Chapter 7.03 of the Clackamas County Code pertaining to gates within the public right-of-way.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Do the commissioners have any proposed changes or amendments to the draft ordinance at this time? Seeing none, I announce that the second reading will be Thursday, October 11, 2018, at a regular scheduled business meeting at 10:00 AM. The next item on our agenda today is the consent agenda. Would the -- please note that Item D2 has been removed from the consent agenda as a necessary action on part of the board, and would the clerk please read the consent agenda?
You bet. Today's consent agenda: Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Housing and Community Development Division and the City of Gladstone for the Claridan Street improvements in Gladstone; approval of Amendment Number One to the intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Human Services for the Operation and Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program Employment and Training; approval of multiple agency services agreement with home energy suppliers for reimbursement of energy supplies on behalf of low-income households; approval of Amendment Number Six to the intergovernmental agreement with Multnomah County Department of Human Services Aging and Disability Services Division; approval of Amendment Number Twelve for the intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon, acting by and through its Oregon Health Authority for operation as the local public health authority for Clackamas County; approval of Amendment Number Two to a revenue intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Department of Human Services Office of Vocational and Rehabilitation Services; under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of a board order adopting the vacation of a non-maintained local access road; approval of Amendment Number One to the Special Public Works Financing Contract with Oregon Infrastructure Authority for construction of improvements on Two Last Road; under the Finance Department, approval of a lease agreement by and between Glenn and Glenna Butler and Clackamas County for the District Attorney's Office; approval to -- approval of a purchase of annual technical support for support services for Oracle America; under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Also, the item -- the next item is the one that was removed. Under Public and Government Affairs, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and the City of Lake Oswego regarding payment for services related to the Willamette Falls locks; approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and the City of Oregon City regarding payment for services related to Willamette Falls locks; under County Council, approval of a resolution appointing the Board of County Commissioners as the local Board of Health; approval of a settlement agreement in the case of Swanson versus Clackamas County Sheriff's Office and all; under Business and Community Services, approval of the Oregon Business Development Department Brownfield's Redevelopment Fund Grant Contract; and approval of a board order approving a tax foreclosed property for declaration as surplus; under North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Oak Lodge Water Service District for the Boardman Wetland Project; and Water Environment Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Happy Valley and Water Environment Services for establishment and administration of reimbursement districts. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
Thank you. Do the commissioners want to remove or pull any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I move we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as amended. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. County Administrator, update.
Thank you, commissioners. I do have a few items to share with you today. First of all, the Health Centers Division of our Health, Housing, and Human Services Department has forged a new partnership with the Oregon Food Bank to provide free -- a free food market. This is a market where people could come to do just that, get free food. It's open to all residents. This is a great opportunity for those who are in need to get food for their household. The market will take place from 10:00 to 11:30 on the first Tuesdays of each month in front of the Beaver Creek Clinic. Upcoming dates are October 2, November 6, and December 4. Also, the Clackamas County Clerk has nearly completed installing all new ballot boxes throughout the county. The new boxes have enhanced security, increased capacity, improved visibility, and improved accessibility. On the point of accessibility, all the new boxes will be located outdoors, so our residents have 24-hour access to them during open election periods. And further, some boxes that were geographically -- were geographically relocated to better-serve residents. For instance, one Lake Oswego box was previously located just three blocks from another box, and so they moved it, and the new location is four miles away to better-serve residents in that area of the city. So 23 of the 25 new boxes have been installed, with the other two soon to be completed. And then I have a special announcement. Our county administrator is away this week. He's at the ICMA Conference in Baltimore, and yesterday, he was awarded -- he received an award for 40 years in public service from -- during his service with ICMA. So he was -- he received his 40-year award, which is very exciting. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Commissioner Communication. Commissioner Schrader.
All right. Well, on the consent agenda today, I wanted to point out two things. We have two intergovernmental agreements between Clackamas County and the City of Lake Oswego in Clackamas County and the City of West -- City of Oregon City, excuse me. And the background on this is that back in -- the Senate Bill 256 was passed on the state legislature in 2017. It established a Willamette Falls Locks State Commission, and the purpose of this commission was to see how we could move ahead, to unlock the locks, as we're saying it, and to transfer Willamette Falls locks to a non-federal owner. So this was part of that work, and this is part of the financing that has gone towards that. And the county has used lottery dollars to help finance it from our end of it. And also Tourism and Cultural Affairs has also financed funds from their budgets to do this, because we are working very hard to get the locks transferred to an owner that will operate it. We've been working very diligently for a number of years with the Army Corps of Engineers to make this happen, and together with Mayor Russ Axelrod, who is the Chair of the State Commission, and Sandy Carter and I serve as Vice Chairs of that. So stay tuned for that. I think it's coming close to actually happening. It is a National Historic Trust site, and we believe it will be not only a transportation corridor when there's a disaster, or if and when a disaster hits, but also it'll provide additional recreation on the river, where basically the upper and lower rivers will once more be able to be connected with one another. So I wanted to mention that. Other than that, boy, I've had a busy week. I actually have been traveling around the state, visiting with all of our counties across the state, because I am an executive officer in the Association of Oregon Counties. So my trips this week included Grants Pass, Klamath Falls, Boise, and Ontario. And this weekend, I'm heading to the DOWS. Following meeting we will have with our counties in Salem, and then finally, we will have our own District Eight meeting with Washington Clackamas and Multnomah Counties attending. And the reason we're having these meetings is that this is in preparation for the November presentation of the budget, and it's also in preparation for the legislative session that's coming very quickly upon us in 2019. So it's been very interesting for me to travel all over the state. I do have to tell my rural counterparts that actually Clackamas County is rural and urban. And so I've been able to educate them, to let them know that we have everything in Clackamas County. We have urban, we have rural, we even have frontier when you head up to the Mount Hood, and that indeed, Mount Hood, half of it is in Clackamas County and Hood River Counties. So we kind of claim it as our mountain, despite the fact that our Portland friends usually use it as one of their iconic photographs for Portland. I remind people, what they're really looking at is a beautiful, beautiful chunk of Clackamas County, so just to remind people of that. Other than that, I did attend a luncheon yesterday with the Clackamas Service Center, and they are the service center that has just rebuilt themselves. They had a terrible fire. They have rebuilt their structure, rebuilt their programming, and they continue to serve houseless individuals and people that need that help up to become stable and get housing. And I know that with my fellow commissioners, both Sonia and Ken, this is a big deal to the entire commission. This is one of our, I think, our key initiatives as a group of commissioners, as colleagues, that we are really working very hard to solve the houseless issue in Clackamas County. And I know that Commissioner Fisher, for sure, has been doing a tremendous amount of research on really innovative ways and how we can get funding to make sure people live in houses. So thank you for that, appreciate it. Okay, so, right now, I am going to do the Word of the Week. And the Word of the Week is "Peruse." To read through with attention, did you know, peruse can also mean to examine with an eye to detail. It also has long been a literary word used by William Shakespeare in a lot of his famous works and plays. The children peruse the library in search of books about pirates and buried treasure. So that's our Word of the Week. Now we have our arts and culture activities in the county. Okay. "Nuts and Bolts Theater Company Presents the Woman in Black, a Haunting Ghost Story Told by Two Actors in an Empty Theater," or is it? "The ghost seems to manifest as the tale continues. It is a chilling thriller, but appropriate for all ages. Friday and Saturday, September 28 and 29, 7:30 PM. Sunday, September 30, at 3:00 PM, at the Boring Damascus Grange Hall." Now, "Clackamas Repertory Theater Presents Wing It for Kids." "Clackamas Rep's Interactive Theater Series for Kids" returns from summer break with a show that includes singing, dancing, and fun for the whole family. Join in the fun and giggle a ton. Saturday, September 29, 10:30 AM, at the Osterman Theater on the Clackamas Community College Campus. And for any other information concerning arts in our county, you can go to clackamasartsalliance.org. And one last thing that I wanted to mention is, again, Lakewood is doing Pippin right now as its musical, and that is Lakewood Theater of the Arts, and that is in Lake Oswego, and it is getting fantastic reviews. So in any case, thanks, colleagues.
Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chair Humberston. Piggybacking on Commissioner Schrader's comments about housing and homelessness, I just wanted to share a story. Was it -- it wasn't yesterday, it was the day before yesterday. Three of us, Commissioner Humberston and Commissioner Savis, and I went up to Mount Hood, where there was a community meeting on public safety. And much of the concern during that public meeting was about homelessness, camping, fires in the woods, people leaving litter and trash, people not having a place to go, homes being broken into. Lots of concern by the citizens up there on the mountain, and a real desire for things to -- for us to solve it, to fix it, to solve the problem, so that people can live their lives without that stress. One person, Joyce Stone, was very articulate in stating her concerns, and I had the wonderful opportunity after the meeting to engage with her and a group of citizens there, and said, "Okay, well, why don't -- you are the -- you are local, you know where your challenges are right here. Tell me, what do you think?" Because a lot of the concern was, "Well, just change the codes, change the zoning, change the..." And it's like, "Okay, well, which codes, which zoning? What are you -- what are you actually talking about? And let's really get down to brass tacks." What I want to emphasize about this story is that the best policy comes from people that are closest to the issues, and it's really important for citizens to engage with one another, to really think about what they need for their communities, and to help us, because we are -- we make decisions and we influence policy. In this area of housing and homelessness, our greatest ability is to influence at the state level and also at the national level on how we get the resources for housing. But we also have this Housing and Homelessness Task Force of key stakeholders in our community at the local level. And I was at that meeting last night, observing -- Commissioner Savis was there as well. We are not speaking at these meetings. We are observing the excellent conversation and communications that's happening on the very nuts and bolts details of what is the problem and what can we do at the local level. And I am looking so forward to those recommendations to give us, as a commission, the foundation of which to make some more substantive changes that will help at least us systematically in Clackamas County address what we are able to address. And just a plug for the Metro Housing Bond, along with the constitutional amendment that is going to be on the ballot coming up in November. I think you've -- we've heard, we've talked about it as a commission. We know that this effort will not solve all the problems, but it will help us house people in our community. It's a step forward, it's a step in the right direction. Collectively, it takes all of us. It's not just government, but it's faith community, it's business community, it's citizens working together to look at our fellow neighbor and say, "You know, you matter, and this issue's important, and we are going to work collectively to solve it."
Thank you. I had the opportunity to attend the Vietnam Memorial dedication in Boring, and as a Vietnam era veteran, I was very appreciative of the efforts that were put forth there. I particularly want to commend Steve Bates and his community for the efforts that they did to put this memorial up. It was very well done, very tasteful, and they are now working on a memorial for the Vietnam War at the state capitol. So I encourage people to support that in any way that you can. As we all know, a lot of people that came back from that war were not greeted very well by the public at that time, and I do believe we've learned some lessons since that time. The soldier, the sailor, the marine, the airman, they take an oath to serve their country, and they don't make the decision as to whether or not they go to war. Politicians make those decisions. So the blame should fall on the politicians who make those decisions. The arguments should be focused on those politicians and not on the soldiers, sailors, marines, airmen, et cetera. So I think it is noteworthy that today, we do focus our energies that way, as opposed to the way it used to be. As was pointed out, we attended the meeting on crime up there in the Welch's area. I contacted the sheriff the next day, and he asked me to get the information about the individual who actually put together that meeting. He's indicated he's going to call them and probably have a personal conversation with them himself. I shared with him some of the concerns, as were outlined by Commissioner Fisher, and there was an additional one. They used to have a substation up there, and I know the community would like to see one again. But I also pointed out to the community that the sheriff has to assign his resources where the need is the greatest, and that isn't always where we might like it to be. So hopefully, that conversation will take place. An aside conversation that occurred was that apparently there was an ambulance response problem not too long ago. And again, coincidentally, a representative of the ambulance company was at the luncheon yesterday, at the Service Center luncheon. So I've asked those -- the Fire Department Chief and the ambulance folks to get together and have a conversation and see if they can solve that problem. And it sort of falls in what I consider to be the role of a politician, and that is to find two people who actually can get something done, put them together, and then get out of the way.
Right.
So whenever you have that opportunity, you should grab it, in my opinion. At the Clackamas Service Center luncheon, I lost count of the fundraising at $75,000, so I know that they did quite well in their fundraising effort. I have been assigned as our representative from AOC. I have been assigned as our representative from AOC and for our board on the cap and trade issue that is coming down the pike, that I'm reasonably certain the state legislators intend to pass this year. So my focus has been on how do you mitigate the damages as much as possible and maximize the benefits as much as possible, and hopefully not cost people their jobs. Most of the county representatives from the other counties that I've spoken to have taken up that challenge and have put forward about a dozen or so recommendations that we think will help ameliorate the negative impacts and maximize the positive impacts of any subsequent bill coming forward. And finally, I'll be working with the mediation group on the Aurora Airport issue, and our focus will be that the land use rules and regulations should be followed. There should not be an end run around those land use rules and regulations in the Clackamas County, who is impacted by the expansion of the Aurora Airport, if it were to occur, and the citizens of Wilsonville in particular are impacted by it, and we should have a seat at the table for those discussions. But in the final analysis, our land use rules and regulations should be followed by everybody and not end run. And on that note, I will talk about the dog today. So this is Benji. He's an adorable guy, as you can tell, and he is looking for a dog-savvy home to call his own. He's an energetic pup at about six months old and a border collie to boot, so he will need to move in with someone who understands his breed and is enthusiastic about the training for him to thrive and be the best boy in the world. He loves toys, they're literally the best thing in the world. A training class would be super cool for him. He'd like to find a home with children nine or older, and he would be glad to meet you if you stop by for a visit. For more information about Benji and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at (503) 655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. Does anyone else have anything else this morning?
Chair, just one comment about the Vietnam Memorial, that those folks came down to the Association of Oregon Counties to present this, and unanimously, every county in the state of Oregon has voted yes.
Outstanding.
To make sure that that memorial will happen, so.
Wonderful. That's good to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's no other comments, then this September 27, 2018 business meeting of the Clackamas County Commissioners is adjourned.
Thank you.